Here that needs to be.
We believe that Mr. Miccel was intending to be here, but we don't see them. We do have a quorum to-
The Planning Commission to order. I'd like to thank the staff and the commissioners for being willing to help with the special meeting. I hope it's viewed positively as the Planning Commission making every effort to move the business that comes before it ahead. The first item on the agenda is number one, under the public hearing items, application M-13-5. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we ready with graphics, John? What I'd like to do, John, if I could, is start with the current future land use map. And this is not of a scale that you can, John, can zoom in for us for this area and slide around, but the, if you view the plan, you'll see basically a large lemon line color at the southeast corner of Centennial and Crawford, and basically extending south from there, the little blue dot there representing Sunset School. And the first item before you, we're reporting to you that the future land use map, which is a guide to future uses of land, identifies this as a future suburban residential parcel. And what we noted in the report is the future land use map is not necessarily there to predetermine land use or zoning on any one site or specific locations, but it does provide a framework for making decisions that impact future growth and development patterns. So we start with that, and the plan indicates that where circumstances or land use or development goals have changed, amendments to the land use map may be appropriate to accommodate development that furthers the planned vision or other goals of the comprehensive plan. One of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to enhance our gateways into the city. And for that reason, that is another standpoint from which you can view this application. We have a number of categories, and we've listed for you in the commercial category that retail and service and C-5 zoning are potential zoning classifications within that land use classification. And the location criteria is that commercial sites should be located adjacent to arterials or major thoroughfares, which provide needed ingress and egress in order to avoid congestion. And so this is an intersection of two arterial streets, so it certainly meets location criteria for a commercial site. As you can see, the suburban residential classification does not support expanding the existing C-5 zoning on the south side of Crawford. So on behalf of the property owner and Quick Shop, a professional engineering consultant has filed this request to amend the future land use designation of this parcel from suburban residential to commercial. A commercial designation would support the expansion of commercial zoning needed to allow construction of a new and expanded convenience store. So we noted to you in the background report, this was identified as a potential conflict area when the plan was adopted. We pointed out to the Planning Commission, City Commission, that one option for dealing with that was a downzoning of the property to residential to further reflect the desire to see it redevelop as residential property. There was no interest by the planning or City Commission to downzone the property. So we're looking at a transition area, and the suburban residential designation, if it was kept, would indicate that it's either expected or desired that this site would transition into a low-density residential pattern over time. The commercial designation would indicate otherwise. We pointed out to you on page four and five of the report that arterial streets are the highest classification of street. And as new arterials are built and redevelopment occurs along existing arterials, access should be very limited to facilitate traffic movements along those roadways. The other thing we would note is that you and the City Commission have made beautification of interstate entryways into the city a high priority, and West Crawford does serve as an entryway into the community from I-135. So your role this afternoon is to decide what you think the future vision is for the West Crawford corridor. Is it a commercial corridor leading into the city from I-135, or a partially commercial, partially residential corridor? We have provided for you a summary of possible findings, which could support a decision to amend the plan. And the first of those is, West Crawford is a major commercial gateway into the city from the interstate. The amendment area is part of a commercial corridor that is currently zoned C-5 and developed with service commercial uses. The Quick Shop site has interstate exposure and frontage on two arterial streets, and it's not likely to be redeveloped with suburban residential uses. So your alternatives on this particular item would be to reaffirm the existing comprehensive plan and basically leave the suburban residential designation in place, or you could recommend to the City Commission that the future land use map be amended to show only the Quick Shop property on the south side of Crawford between Centennial Road and Willow Drive as future commercial. And that's the black area outlined there. You could, as a follow-up to that, if you wish, initiate your own amendment and follow-up and look at expanding that area and further clarifying where the commercial residential boundary should be. But that would be something that you would initiate as a follow-up action. Our question today is, should this area, inside that area, be re-designated as future commercial as opposed to future suburban residential? Mr. Bankston may want to amplify this, but one of the things about amending the comprehensive plan, the bar is higher for that than it is for a text amendment or a zoning map amendment, and it does require a vote of at least a majority of the commission as a whole, which would be five affirmative votes, with Mr. Story recusing himself from these items. We would not be able to achieve that, but it could, you could still take action on it, and it would go to the, potentially go to the City Commission as a failure to recommend just because the number of votes are not present, but they would still have a sense of what the commission was thinking and your findings. With that, I'd be open. Any questions about the map or the staff report?
Questions of staff? If there are none, we would like to hear from the applicant on this issue.
Hi, Isaac Crumey with PEC, and I guess I would, I know that we've gone over everything in detail that Dean's presented, so if you have any additional questions, I'd be able to answer those.
Not on this matter for me. Other commissioners?
Thank you, Isaac.
Thanks.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this map amendment change? If there are none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, are we congruent with the staff's findings, or are there any additional items you'd want to mention? And the staff recommends that the amendment is justified. Is there discussion or a motion to take action?
Just point of clarification, we'll make a motion to take action if it, and it'll, Wally's going to recuse himself, so it'll fail by, how is that going to look?
It can go on to the City Commission. It will simply go to them as a failure to recommend because there were not four affirmative votes. But they can take it from there and make, they're going to make the final decision anyway, but that's the way it will be reported to them, that they will still see what the outcome of the vote was and what your findings, whoever makes the motion and adopts findings, those will go to the City Commission as well.
With four affirmatives? Let's just be the devil's advocate here and say we get no affirmatives.
Well, that is just assuming that if there are no affirmatives, then it will still be a failure to recommend.
Okay.
And I'm comfortable with that, if you guys are. But is another option for us to table this to the end of the meeting and see if Commissioner Miccel comes in?
That would be a possibility, but we'd probably have to send somebody out of the room to try to contact Mr. Miccel, and we, he reported that he would be able to attend, and we were counting him amongst our present commissioners, so.
Are we going to have the same problem with the other items, or only this item?
Only this item.
What would you like for us to do, Dean? Give us a recommendation so we move it forward.
Well, I'll defer to Mr. Bankston on the procedural part. We're dealing with, our substantive recommendation is that we think that an amendment of the land use classification is justified, and it'd be up to the four participating members to formulate a motion and recommend what you think's an appropriate recommendation to the City Commission, and that will be reported to them.
Mr. Story, would you like to recuse yourself at this?
Yes.
Thank you. More discussion on this item, more motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, not to become too preoccupied with the procedural aspects, but in order to accomplish what I would expect might be your wish, the, certainly if Mr. Miccel, if you should act, and if Mr. Miccel should arrive before the end of your deliberations today, the matter could certainly also be brought back for reconsideration.
Okay.
In that, any one voting in the, assuming there's an affirmative action taken, anyone voting in the affirmative could ask for reconsideration, and Mr. Miccel could then participate in the following, in the subsequent vote.
Thank you.
Just one quick question, and how, as the other two items we're going to look at today, and eventually the future development possibly of Quick Shop, is that affected significantly by the way this action happens here? Does this have to happen for their development to take place?
We have ordered, or sequenced these in the order that we think they need to be taken, and the, one of the findings that you should make in any rezoning action is that the change in zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so the order of things, if you think that the suburban residential designation is not appropriate, and that this is realistically a commercial site, then the order of things to saying, "We see this as a commercial site," is an essential step to then any support for commercial zoning.
You can make a motion, or you want me to?
Okay. Yeah. I'd make a motion on M-13-5 for approval of a map amendment for the suburban residential commercial land use boundary along West Crawford, based off staff's guidelines. It's located in the majority, or major gateway of the community from I-35, frontages on two arterial streets, and is part of the corridor currently zoned C-5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion failed. Four affirmative votes.
Four oh. Now, if we want to consider, as a follow-up, the area up to Choctaw Street, does Mr. Story continue to recuse himself, or do you want to come back to the?
If you want to discuss whether you, John, could you put up that alternative map? This is just something that we worked up, and what we find in some of these areas, we look at on the comprehensive plan, the boundaries, in our world, we live with property boundaries and parcel boundaries, and those boundaries are somewhat fuzzy on the future land use map. And so if you looked at the map, this is where the Ramada Inn is, and this is where some other commercial is. The boundary on this side is extremely fuzzy, and so what you've done is you've addressed this piece here, but if you wanted to initiate looking at clarifying just where the commercial residential boundary ought to be here, that is an action that you could initiate, and Mr. Story could participate in that, but then he would have to recuse himself again to go to the next item, so.
So we need, well, I would like to see that plan move forward, and the staff do what it needs to do to bring that back to us, initiate the follow-up. I don't know if the other commissioners agree, but in my mind, that area should all be service commercial, so we should consider it.
If we had a motion to that effect, and it received a majority from the sitting board there, we would initiate that on your behalf and bring it back to you.
Does that then require notification to everybody within that?
We would do a public notice for that, yes.
Would we put signs out?
We would not put signs out, but we would do a public hearing notice, particularly to the owners that would be affected. I don't know if the owners of Ramada know that their property is shown as future residential or not, but we would inform them of that, and then they would have an opportunity to come.
Well, it seems logical to me to have that at least looked at in some depth as to be possible commercial. So I would make a motion that we ask the staff to bring back a plan to address the area of boundary in black, besides what we've approved today, or rejected today by four affirmative votes, to be brought back as a proposal for consideration for map amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll leave that to staff. Next item is application Z-13-2, also from PEC on behalf of Quick Shop. Staff's report on that application.
What you're going to see in this particular application is a blending, because the application that you have in front of you is an application for a zoning change to expand the C-5 zoning in place at the corner of Willow Drive and Crawford, and to expand that to the west into an area that is currently unzoned. Part and parcel of that is the site development plan that is with that. And what we probably did incorrectly, when you discussed this before, was kind of, to make it easier, we somewhat decoupled the site plan from the zoning, but they are essentially a single application, and they have to be looked at together. The reports that we have in your packet separate out the details of the plan from the broader zoning question, but they are, in the end, linked together in a single application. But what we reported to you is that this area that's on the south side of Crawford was platted way back in the 1950s, and this was an area that was viewed as a housing area primarily when there was a strong demand for housing for personnel that were serving at the Schilling Air Force Base. And then with the construction of the interstate, the closure of the airbase, and we began to see commercial development along Crawford, but that did not occur until the 1970s. And the store that is in place today, the Quick Shop store that you see in the aerial photo, was constructed in 1978. And we have gone into some detail there about how this additional property ended up in the hands of Quick Shop, but the short story is that the city of Salina, through a capital improvement project, realigned and reconstructed Centennial Road, which used to just run straight up along the edge of the convenience store. And the road was realigned to create an intersection here, a four-way intersection with Beverly Drive. And what that did was create an area here that was much wider than what was needed to be maintained as right-of-way. But there are a number of steps that had to be gone through to get to that point, but all of those steps have been met, and the property was acquired by Dillons Real Estate. And so they have assembled all this together, and the steps from there were to be an application for Plan C-5 zoning, which you have in front of you, a site development plan, and the property would need to be platted into a single building or zoning lot, which is what you see in front of you. The, Dillons was told that the site plan would need to address what would happen with the gateway landscaping. The city of Salina has planted at the corner, would need to address curb cut locations and the relocation of existing public and franchise utilities. So where you see that blue line right there, there are power lines and a sewer line and everything that run along there, those, as part of the replat and part of the redevelopment of this site, those would be relocated, or in the case of the sewer line, abandoned, and that would be addressed through the replat that you have, that is the next item. So the application you have before you is for Plan C-5 zoning for a 1.19 acre site. The planned commercial districts require the submittal of a site plan, but they do allow applicants to request and for planning and city commissions to approve deviations and exceptions to standard requirements. And in our review of their application, and this is a modified request, there was a request to allow green space and landscaping located within the public street right-of-way to count towards meeting the front yard landscaping requirements, and we'll go into that in a little more detail. But the plan that is presented to you today provides about one-third of the amount of required landscaping that would be based on the city's landscaping regulations on their own property. There's a request to allow a 70-foot pole sign along Centennial Road to allow for increased visibility, and that sign is located right here, southwest corner of the site. And because of the way the sign is designed, staff has determined that the total sign area of that sign would be 300 square feet, and a sign of that size must be set back equal to 25 feet from the Centennial Road property line, and this sign is not set back that far, and the applicant desires to leave it in that location because of sight lines. So we have the application for a plat that is a companion to this, but before we get to that, the zoning request and the request for deviations should be considered first. So as we walk through this, the convenience store is a permitted use in C-5. There's no deviations there. The front yard setbacks are 25 feet from a public street, except at 75 feet from the center of an arterial street, which Crawford and Centennial Road are both arterial streets. In a rear yard situation, a 10-foot setback is required where C-5 zone property abuts residential property. As we pointed out, in addition, there's a minimum 15-foot landscape buffer. They have increased, they have eliminated their driveway from behind the store and have increased that buffer to between 27 and 28 feet. The lot they proposed meets minimum dimension requirements, and as we noted, the maximum sign height is 50 feet. They've requested 70, and their landscape buffer on the south now meets the 15-foot requirement. So on the landscaping side, the only deviation they're now requesting is to allow green space in the right-of-way to be counted as front yard landscaping, but they're no longer requesting a reduction on the buffer at the south edge of the property. If we look at factors you are to consider on the zoning side, one of them is suitability for redevelopment under the existing zoning. Well, the property in question on the west has no zoning classification, and so this necessitates incorporating that unzoned right-of-way into the building site. And certainly, the applicant believes that having it unzoned is not beneficial, and it inhibits their plans for redeveloping and expanding the site. And they believe that that vacated right-of-way is suitable for commercial development, and that's what their plan is based on. If we look at the character of the neighborhood, this is at the far west end of a commercial corridor. It is in proximity to the Crawford Street-I-135 interchange. It's bounded by C-5 zoning on the east and interstate exposure on the west. There's C-5 property on the north, and staff believes that Plan C-5 zoning would be compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property and would be consistent with the development pattern on the north and south sides of West Crawford. So I think that's apparent, looking at the aerial photo there, that that is predominantly a commercial corridor leading in from the interstate. However, there is residential property to the south, and it is always important when residential and commercial abut each other to provide adequate buffers between commercial and residential property. On the original plan, they were asking that the eight-and-a-half-foot buffer be found to be adequate. They are no longer requesting that with their revised request. In city staff's review, there is adequate water, sanitary sewer, gas, and electric in place, so there's no real impact in that direction. We pointed out that this area was identified as suburban residential, and it's really a conflict area between that suburban residential and the C-5 zoning. And we pointed out that we felt expansion of the C-5 zoning would require an amendment of the comprehensive plan, which you have addressed in item one. The other thing is that the plan states that based on the importance of community gateways, development at these locations shall be held to a higher site design standard, and that you should look at landscape, building, and building orientation, and streetscape amenities as part of that. And there's also criteria for where commercial sites should be. We have identified, and these are very broad and general findings, that would apply to C-5 across the board and not necessarily to this particular plan, but we've identified, looking at the factors you're considering in a zoning case, some possible findings on page eight of your report that would support C-5 zoning in general. But what we're recommending is that because the site development plan is an inseparable part of the zoning application, that one possible action would be to recommend that this item be continued if the applicant concurs, to allow the applicant to prepare- this item be continued if the applicant concurs to allow the applicant to prepare and submit a traffic study analyzing the effect of the proposed convenience store expansion on Crawford Street traffic volumes and movements. If it is the wish of the applicant to get a form of recommendation from the commission today at the close of the hearing, regardless of what form that might take, and they don't concur with a continuance for traffic study, then obviously, staff will work with you to formulate findings in support of whatever action you think's appropriate, and going into a closed session to help develop those findings is an option. So we have separated this out, but we pointed out that staff will provide a summary of its findings at the end of the staff report, which you may accept and agree with or disagree with. You may consider other information supplied by the applicant or concerned property owners. At the close of the hearing, you would have the option of going into a closed session with the city attorney at that time to deliberate on a quasi-judicial matter and develop findings and conclusions. So what we addressed is looking at the overall zoning pattern of the area, which is predominantly C-5, and C-5 certainly fits that pattern. But again, the site plan that's up on the screen there is part and parcel of the request to expand the commercial zoning. So I'm going to just walk through the overall highlights of the site, but the proposed convenience store would have 5,549 square feet. There would be 26 customer and employee parking spaces west, north, and east of the store building. The gasoline pump islands and canopy would be located north of the store building. And we would have the access to the site as proposed from a new driveway connection to Centennial Road, an existing curb cut opening on Crawford Street, and a relocated driveway on Willow Drive. There is a driveway opening here. It's more for circulation, but we would have a driveway opening here, which would be primarily for customers, and then a second driveway here. So there would be access from the three surrounding streets with two driveway openings on Willow. The size of the site with the two parcels pieced together is 51,946 square feet, which is 1.19 acres. The canopy area is 7,680 square feet, so it actually would cover slightly more area than the store itself. It is within the lot coverage allowed in the C-5 district. One thing when we point out is that of the 51,946 square feet, 41,200 square feet, or about 80% of the site, would be paved with parking and drives, and only about 10% of the total area would be left to green space, and that is primarily here at the south. So the building itself covers a little over 10% of the lot. Landscaping would account for about 10% of the lot, and then 80% of the lot would be paved, parking, and drives. John, if you could go to the visuals on the building itself. The building as proposed would be 95 feet wide facing Crawford with a 48-by-160-foot canopy over the top of 10 proposed gas pump islands, and that would be located between the store building and Crawford Street. So while this is the front elevation from Crawford, this elevation does not show the canopy that would be located between Crawford and the store. As proposed, the canopy area would be 64 feet north of the convenience store. The north facade would feature windows and identification signs, and we'd have a drive-it stucco exterior with brick wainscoting around the bottom. The southeast and west facades would have brick on the lower portion with drive-it stucco above, and those elevations are in your packet. A setback of 40 feet for the canopy and 151 feet for the convenience store is proposed along Crawford. The building setback is 61 feet from Willow, and it would be 27 feet from the south property line and 48 feet from Centennial Road. The building would be 18-foot high with a flat roof. There would be a pitched hip roof over the opening, which would be 25 feet high at the The revised site plan shows four driveway openings into the site, one new entrance off Centennial, two relocated drives on Willow, and retaining the existing driveway opening on Crawford. The primary entrance for westbound traffic coming from the interstate would be the Crawford Street entrance, which would lead directly into the gas pump islands. And then Willow Drive and Centennial would serve as secondary entrances leading to the convenience store parking areas. The proposed driveway widths are 36 feet up at Crawford, 36 feet and 31 feet on Willow. And the way we measure driveways, which is at the property line, it's 55 feet wide here at the throat here, it's 36 feet in width on Centennial Road. These widths all exceed the city's 30-foot maximum driveway width, but you would have the authority to approve them if Quick Shop provides adequate justification for the need for the additional driving width. As we pointed out, the driveway behind the store has been deleted from the revised plan, and the rear buffer now exceeds 15 feet. We reported to you that Crawford in this location carries 14,735 vehicles, plus or minus, per day, and Centennial Road has about half that volume south of Crawford. The intersection here is signalized. There is a dedicated left turn lane for making left turns. That turn lane ends before you get to this driveway opening in Willow Drive. And the number of fueling stations under this plan would increase from 4 to 16 and ultimately 20, and that would increase traffic and turning movements into the site. Using the Institute for Transportation Engineers' trip generation rates, that would be a projected fivefold increase potentially in traffic. And the other thing to look at is the convenience store would be doubling in size over the current store configuration. So staff said the belief that additional analysis of how the Crawford Street driveway opening would function is needed. And we think that once we get into the net retail floor area, that 26 spaces should meet the city's minimum requirements. The access aisles and parking stalls all meet city standards. I think we determined that about 90% of the front yard area along Crawford would be paved. One of the things that the city engineering department made note of is that we did not want additional runoff directed to Willow Drive, which might overload the storm sewers there, and so a good portion of the site will drain west. But because of the paving, we're looking at a 300% increase in impervious surface, and the engineering department has requested that the applicant submit a drainage analysis to confirm that that additional runoff sent into this ditch area will not exceed the capacity of that ditch to accept it. So the plan for this sign is that it would be a V-shaped, high-rise, pylon sign, and it would be 70 feet in height if you so approved. It is not something that would be allowed by Wright, as it is at the Quick Shop at Schilling and Riffle, because it is not within 660 feet of the interstate road bed. They're also proposing a second sign, if you'd like to go to that, John, which would be on the Crawford orientation, and this would be out along Crawford, and that sign is in the neighborhood of 30 feet and would be about 150 square feet in area. So the sign along Centennial, because it exceeds 200 square feet in sign area, must be set back at least 25 feet unless you were to approve an exception. As to the front yard landscaping, planning staff has determined that with the three front yard areas, Willow, Crawford, Centennial, this site would be required to provide 9,870 square feet of landscape area. And the plan that is presented to you on the screen, John, that is not the, we want to go back to the revised plan, because we do not have a revised landscape plan. We only have a revised site plan at this point. And so the revised plan shows 3,234 square feet of front yard landscape area, and the maximum amount of paving coverage is along Crawford, where about 92% of the front yard area would be paved. So the buffers that are provided are narrower than the five feet that would normally be required, and a total of 10 trees and 162 shrubs were proposed on the original plan. As I noted, the site plan has been modified, but we have not received a modified landscape plan. So we have outlined for you on Page 4 that our job is to review the plan, determine compliance with city ordinances, regulations, and policies. We have done that and pointed out the areas where deviations are being requested. Point B makes it clear that the site development plan submitted with the rezoning application shall be scheduled for the planning commission's consideration and public review at the same public hearing as the rezoning application is to be considered. That's why they are joined together today. Planning commission shall prepare and transmit to the Board of Commissioners and to the developer its findings with respect to which the site development plan complies with the standards set out in this section, together with its recommendation to the city commission. And of course, your options would be recommend approval, recommend disapproval, recommend approval subject to certain revisions or conditions, or recommend that the plan be substantially revised and resubmitted. I think we had quite a bit of discussion at your previous consideration of this matter about the Crawford Street driveway opening. We've identified different approaches that could be taken with that, one of which would be to simply approve the plan as proposed and allow the driveway entrance to be used as proposed. Eliminating the Crawford Street driveway from the site plan would take the concurrence of the applicant. That is something that they would have to concur with. Converting the driveway to a right-in, right-out only design is, again, something that the applicant would have to concur with. A raised median on Crawford Street would be something that would put the burden on the city to address. Requiring the left turn lane in Crawford Street to be extended to the east is something that could be done as a condition and made the responsibility of the applicant. Our concern is that for the staff to make a recommendation that's solid and for the commission to really have a solid basis for recommending one of those alternatives, it's really only defensible if it's based on the results of a traffic study. We don't have a traffic study at this time. We pointed out to you that the zoning ordinance gives you, in the case of a planned district such as this, the discretion when you deem it necessary to require a traffic study or traffic survey. So one of the options would be to continue this application with the consent of the applicant to allow them to prepare and submit a traffic study analyzing the effect the expansion would have on Crawford Street traffic volumes and movements. But that is just one of your options. I don't know, John, I guess it's slide number five there, if we could go to that. We don't have these in the slide form, but we just, for your benefit and for comparison purposes, we pointed out that this particular project that you have in front of you is an 88% increase in land area. It's a 102% increase in convenience store area. It's a 500% increase in fueling capacity. The property that is developed at the corner of Schilling and Riffle Drive is on a slightly larger site, but it's roughly an equivalent site if you subtract out the additional space for the car wash. This site, the convenience store, is 3,800 square feet, and they have 12 pump islands. And the plan in front of you today is 5,500 square feet with 20 pump islands on a site that's roughly equivalent to this. And from staff's review, the primary difference we see between the two sites and the two plans is the additional building size and fueling capacity. The Schilling Road site has about 8,800 square feet of front yard green space, and the proposal here on Crawford has about 3,200 square feet of front yard green space, but that also includes, it's also some landscaped area in back of the store. So with that, I would be happy to address any questions that you had. Also, for your benefit, I just summarized the recommendations that you had made at the close of your April 16 hearing, and just so you could be refreshed as to what was recommended at that particular time. So we believe that it's appropriate to have a fully fleshed-out public hearing today. We'd want to hear from the applicant what their preference is in terms of action today or moving forward or being allowed time to submit a traffic study. And then certainly, the city attorney is available here to help you formulate any findings if you wish to make a recommendation today.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Other questions of staff?
Yeah, I do. I always have questions, my apologies. But I need to be clear on this. I sort of got, as Bill O'Reilly might say, "I'm a simple person. I need it simple sometimes." So basically, what we're trying to accomplish here is to move this forward to planned C-5 zoning. And let me finish, then you can clarify where I'm wrong. Then there seems to be three exceptions that would be part of that. One is landscaping allowed in the right-of-way. Two would be a sign height exceeding the current requirement of 70 feet, which is in excess of the current requirement. And three would be to allow driveway widths of 36 feet instead of 30 feet. Am I correct on that much of it?
Yes. Every one of the driveways that's proposed on this plan exceeds the 30-foot width. The other aspect of the 70-foot sign is also to be in this location is less than a 25-foot setback.
An exception.
Yes.
And then the traffic study would be only necessary if we were giving serious consideration to allowing the exit onto Crawford directly from the property. Is that correct?
To being used to approve. Basically, that would come into play if... if the recommendation was to approve this as presented.
Which is including the entrance-exit directly onto Crawford.
The, the plan that the applicant is requesting you to review and recommend approval of is this plan, which retains that as a full-use driveway with all turning movements.
If that's not retained, then a traffic study is not necessarily needed?
No, I think what we're suggesting as a staff is that a decision or recommendation to eliminate it from the plan couldn't really be defended or justified unless it was based on the results of a traffic study that actually documented what the additional impact would be from going from four to twenty fueling stations and doubling the size of the convenience store.
But if the applicant withdrew that as part of the plan, we don't need any finding for that, do we? I guess I don't, I'm, we can't do it. To make a long story short, we don't have a traffic study. We can't act on this without a traffic study. Is that what I'm hearing? So do we just need to continue, listen to public hearing, to continue this per your recommendation until a traffic study and apparently a drainage study is completed?
Drainage study would not have to be completed first. That can be something that would be done as part of the building permit review. But the, what, what we're suggesting is that we need to allow the applicant to present their case and to give you for the reasons that the plan has been prepared and presented to you in this fashion. And then, once you have heard that, you can look to Mr. Bankston for guidance for what your options would be.
Well, I think at the prior meeting, it was pretty clear consensus among the commissioners present at that time that they weren't comfortable with the Crawford
I know, I thought we-
exit entry. I don't have a problem with it, but I think that at least the consensus of the group wanted right-hand only out of there. If we would approve it in the form presented, what's the city's option about making it only right-handed? They would put a median in there or something? Does that compromise the applicant's work? I mean, could the city go in there and put the median in to close their left-hand turns?
That would be ultimately a decision for the governing body and not for you in terms of expending city money. What, I think what we're trying to say is that you may have a conclusion about what is best or safest. But staff's concern is if those conclusions are not based on what's presented to you in the way of a traffic study, that it may not be as defensible a finding as it should be.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry.
Ken, I'm sorry. I think, I think we're getting just ahead of ourselves. If we can let the applicant and anybody else speak, then if we continue to have heartburn about something, then we may make a motion that requires a traffic study before we move on. But we don't, we haven't heard from the applicant yet, so let's-
Other questions of staff? Maybe hear from the applicant.
Okay. Well, I'll start off with some introductions because I'm not alone today. I have Todd Mills with Quick Shop, Tim Roark with Quick Shop in the green shirt here, and Scott Canfield is with PEC also. He's a traffic engineer. And Dean has provided a lot of information. And I don't want to rehash everything that we've looked at. I think the main area we'd like to look at is the Crawford entrance, of course. That's a important item to, to Quick Shop. And we'd just like to kind of go over some of our initial findings. As you can imagine, the traffic study takes quite a bit of time. And there's quite a bit of financial effort that's involved in it as well. And we've done some initial, have some, you know, initial information and some study, brief studies we've looked at. And believe that, you know, that gives us some guidance to look at, to, to re-present to you today for your consideration to make a decision on the site plan. And so I, I guess, like I said, I don't want to rehash everything on the site plan modifications that we're requesting. But if you have any questions on those, I'll be happy to answer them or have any clarification on those. But the main, main driving factors for the location of the drive on Crawford is that there is an existing power pole. As Dean mentioned, there was a utility line, overhead electric line going down the center of that property. And so it's a pretty major line going there. And so that's, that's a factor of, you know, moving this drive to the left or to the west. So that's why we have it shown going back in the, the same location as existing. It's because it's either that or we move it over to the west, which with the topography and the proximity to Centennial, we don't feel like that gains us anything from a safety standpoint, so. But in a minute, I'll have Todd and Scott speak a little bit more on the traffic information. But to go over how the site plan modifications that we've made impact the truck turning movements. Need to get one of these. So the truck turning movements now, we would have fuel trucks that would deliver in, come in along the front of the store and coming here to unload fuel. So as you recall, the tanks were behind the back of the building, and now they're over here on the side. And then deliveries for the store, there was an overhead door in the back. We've redesigned, redesigned the building to move the overhead door to the side. So deliveries would come in here and go in through the overhead door on the side, and trucks, trucks would exit out here. So we're not really intending for this Crawford entrance to be a truck moving in, in this site plan. But it does give us access for traffic coming off of the interstate to have an easy way in here. And there are some things that, comparing this to the existing layout that make that intersection a little bit different. If you're familiar, or can you switch to the aerial with the existing view, please? So the existing store, you turn in here, and the fuel pumps are oriented in this direction, and they're pretty close to the street. So when people come off of here, they're coming in and trying to, you know, decide where to go in to enter the fueling positions. And when they come along Willow, also, they're quite close. And with the new site plan, we are increasing the circulation space within the site to get it to where people are not hanging out into the streets there. And there's a lot more room for them to maneuver within the site. There's room for stacking within the site. And so we don't have anybody hanging out right here or over here as the existing site does. We the, I guess for maybe a little bit on the sign, I, I don't know if there is any question on that. But we prefer this location being within the twenty-five feet of the property line because the overall goal of this sign is so that it can be angled to be visible from the interstate. And so any distance we move it back from that point, it gets us closer to the residential areas, which we'd rather stay away from them also kind of-
While we're on the sign, I mean, I hope you don't mind questions as you go along.
No, go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt your presentation. But can we see the aerial map? And show me where that sign's going to sit in relation to the, the property there. So it's farther away from the homes that exist.
Right.
And if the twenty-five foot setback were there, it would move to the east? Is that-
Yeah, it'd move probably about in there.
And, and it's lit, it'll be oriented towards the highways, right?
Yeah, it'll have one face that faces-
Something about it being angled or something?
Yeah, and then this face will be angled slightly for that side. So it'd be kind of a triangular configuration.
So is it going to project back to the east?
No.
Okay.
No, it's going to project like this direction. Visually, you'd be seeing it from here or from here. So it'll be angled to go out this way. To, I guess to address the landscaping, we have essentially the same perimeter area. We have some more area back here. The plant material will have the same concept. Actually, we're really close to kind of the initial site plan here that we presented at, at the meeting. So there, there are some revisions we'd make to it, but it'd just be adapting to this new layout.
So tell, tell me what you're going to see from the west. I mean, this is our gateway, right? And I think it's people coming off the highway there. If the rest of that corridor's commercial, and I'm a little less concerned about the north side than I am what people see as they approach. And maybe your building's just so beautiful, I shouldn't even think about that. But I, to me, that's where the landscaping or the aesthetic elements ought to be.
Would you be able to flip back to our initial landscape plan?
So we're still thinking something like that from the west?
Yes. Everything, actually, this whole side here is identical. Nothing has changed from the layout. And really, with the, with, you know, everything around the entire perimeter is the same concept. We just have this area here that was paved will now be unpaved, and we'll reposition some of that plant material and have some lawn space. So we, we essentially just increased the residential side buffer and taken out that drive behind the building. And another thing, and I'll let them move on to some more of the traffic discussion on this, unless you have any other questions. But we are, if you recall, on this plat, there was a jog in the right-of-way here. And we were going to go ahead and dedicate that, this portion here, as public right-of-way. So if there were any future improvements to Crawford Street, there is more space that we are providing back for, for use of any improvements that would occur out there. With that, if there's any questions for me, as a, if you think of them as we're going, or now.
And Isaac, you just can't live with a right-turn-only curb cut up there? I mean, it would seem to me that sensible people, and I know not everybody that drives is always sensible, but if you're coming from the west, coming from the east to the west, you should turn on Willow and not try to take a left-hand turn into the facility. And it's, so it's the people going out of that exit and turning left that I worry about. Otherwise, the right-hand turn in and out of it to go east on Crawford or, or coming from the west end of Crawford and turning in, that seems okay to me. Could you make that a, a one-way out and an in?
And I'll let Todd come up too, because I don't think we're ruling out. I think this is a discussion, Dean presented several options, and that would be one of them.
One last question, and maybe this is for Dean as well. Dean, the, if you go back to landscape plan, on the corner of Centennial and Crawford, where that U-shaped hedge row bushes are now, are we giving, are we giving that, is that now Quick Shop property? Do they own that? Or now are we giving up any type of rights? Or is there any way we can retain that for a Welcome to Salina or some sort of placard there at a future date?
Everything that we have, this is, this is what's there today. That will still be in the right-of-way. What Quick Shop is proposing to do is to take those thirteen junipers there and relocate those and incorporate them into the, the U-shaped design that you see on the plan. The, the right-of-way will still be there. What they're primarily proposing to do and requesting to do is to treat what is being retained as Centennial Road right-of-way as part of their front yard area. And there should still be, within the confines of that area there, a place where you could put a reasonably sized gateway, Welcome to Salina sign that was, that was discussed, that would be incorporated into that corner. The, the right-of-way that's going to be retained for Centennial is still quite a bit wider than the right-of-way that we would typically have on a street. And so what this plan reflects is that rather than having a green space buffer on their side of the property line, they're proposing landscaping enhancing the right-of-way and what we suggested previously as a condition of approval and what we have done in other locations, including the former Green Lantern, now Casey's Store at Magnolia and Ninth Street, is entering into a right-of-way maintenance agreement where we basically have the private property owner maintain the right-of-way as part of their responsibilities. And so if you are going to plant material on the public right-of-way in substantial amounts, then what we would like to do and have done in some other locations is, is basically what we call a, a right-of-way maintenance or license agreement for landscaping where the private property owner would be responsible for keeping the landscaping in the right-of-way maintained and properly mowed.
And I, if I may, I have a, I have a question, Isaac, as well. For me, for my purposes, I, I certainly have made some changes we talked about last time, and I think those changes are beneficial. And, and I'm, I'm really supportive of the project. I like the looks of it, as I was last time. I'm struggling with that Crawford Street exit and entrance. I'm really struggling with that. I'm not even for a right turn. I'm for no entrance or exit off Crawford Street, simply because if you look at Schilling and, and the Quick Shop on Schilling, it only has one way to get in, and that's Riffle Drive. This has two options. It has Crawford, or Centennial, which is a lighted intersection, I believe, isn't that correct? And Centennial Crawford Light-
Yes, it's signalized.
Which gives you left and right turn options under a signalized corner. And it also has the Willow Drive, which is another entrance and exit, left and right, both off of Crawford. I can't see how three is going to make it much more advantageous, a little easier for people coming, going. But I, I, if you're really hung up on that entrance, then I think, in my opinion, and I'm only one person, we're going to need a traffic study. Because I reflect back on the development of Ninth and Schilling, and I remember some discussion about putting a median in there and only allowing right turns, as I recall. And eventually, that had to be changed. And now we have cars going across between Walmart and Riffle Drive, as well as left and right turn there. Isn't that correct, Dan?
Correct.
I mean, you revised that plan. It just didn't work to have that median.
Well, it, the commission did, voted not to have a median in there at the time. So it was, it was, there was a lot of accidents there. There continue to be. But it's a, it's a tough intersection.
And I'm certainly no traffic engineer, and we're surrounded by those that are. But I can see when you have two drives, two streets very close together, put another drive right in the middle of them, all serving one business, I, I think it's overdone. I think it's overkill. So I, I, that's my opinion now. So I guess I'm saying, are you really hung up on that drive going onto Crawford? Is, is the owner willing to say, hey, we can live without that drive? We like, we can move the project forward without even having that drive onto Crawford? If you're not willing to say that, then I think we have to look at the city's recommendation for a traffic study.
Well, the, I think that one thing we would consider is, you know, the nature of the drive primarily, you know, for interstate, state traffic, being a convenience store. You know, they want to be able to, to have it be easily accessible. And so I think the consideration of a right-in, right-out would definitely be something to consider. But I, I think maybe after, you know, maybe after a little bit of discussion about the, the intersection here, or having this drive and the Willow intersection, maybe, I'm not sure that'll change your opinion, but I'd just kind of like to go through that and present, put everything on the table before we, you know, just go forth in, in making a decision or eliminating something at this point.
I understand. Thank you.
So, okay. I think that was all I had, and now I'm- And now I might, you know, kind of start off. I know that we had some information presented by Mr. Stack on traffic. And so I might first turn it over to Todd, and he could maybe tell you a little bit of information about the store or, and the traffic patterns, and then follow up with Scott. Thank you.
Thanks. Afternoon. Todd Mills was Quick Shop. While Quick Shop is not going to flat out say no to the right-in, right-out piece, we would like to at least entertain what is proposed for the standpoint that we are in the convenience business as a C store in general. And so we would like to have, the customer have as many opportunities as they can possibly have in order to get in and get out of their site, or get in and get out of the site. With us, you know, we've got several stores across the entire country. And we've actually rejected some sites in particular, if we haven't been able to have a left access into some of those locations, just based off that. I'm not saying that is necessarily the case of what it is if we don't achieve at least some sort of left turn, or at least acknowledge the fact that we would be acceptable with the right-in, right-out piece. But what I would like to at least go over along with Scott and his findings, is kind of go over the accidents that were reported last time, over five, the 38 accidents over a five-year period, and exactly kind of examine what it is that actually was the fault of our own, based off of our own site, to, you know, what was existing there. And then curtail that into what we actually have presented here. So Scott has a data with us. But of those 38 accidents that were actually reported last time, one of which was pertaining to the Quick Shop accident location. And it was not even a left turn accident. It happened to be a right turn going out of our entrance that created that accident. The bulk of the accidents that have occurred have actually occurred along Willow Drive Street versus in Centennial Street. By shutting off that Crawford Street entrance, in essence, what you would essentially do is just allow more cars to enter into that Willow intersection then, potentially increasing just by statistics, the amount of potential accidents that would occur at that particular location. To just take away the drive on that piece, we're actually giving, if you can go back to the site plan again, if you don't mind, we've actually, from the previous site plan that we presented to you guys originally, we've moved and increased that dimension from the north curb line of the site to the north face of the canopy. We've increased that area to 37 feet. So in essence, on a, on our, on a glorious day for us, that would be, if we have all 20 fueling locations done, that would mean that we would have the ability to stack another 20 around the entire site, giving us the ability to have 40 turning. Now, that has never really ever happened kind of in a situation like this. But what I'm getting at is that we have that ability to be able to move traffic in and out of the site better. Will individuals coming in from the interstate? We're trying to attract more of those individuals coming in off the interstate. So coming from the interstate, it is a convenient location to turn directly into it versus having to try to figure out where do I navigate? Either do I return right on Centennial? Do I turn right on the Willow and then back my way back in? We're trying to give the customers a direct entrance point into the site to fuel and then come back out, whether they choose to use the Willow or the Centennial piece, kind of go from there. Scott, do you want to kind of go over some of the other data with regards?
If you'd like to wrap up the word right into an hour.
Yeah. Do you guys have any questions off of what I've said, at least so far?
So you're saying intuitively, they're going to want to enter right on the site? And that makes sense to me, rather than, like, they think they've missed it if they go to Willow. And if there's that much traffic on Willow, it's going to increase the percentage chance of more accidents out on Willow.
Again, I don't think it's ever been the problem of the right-hand turn from the interstate. It's, and traffic study as you will, I live here, I drive it. And what happens is you come down Crawford, and you're following four cars. And the first car stops and pulls into Rod's or pulls into the Hickory Hut, and I've got to stop. And then the next car pulls in and stops the whole traffic and pulls into Rod's. And then we're all going again. And then the next, and all I'm trying to do is get to Centennial, but there's not enough time for me to get out and then cut back into Centennial, because I don't know where those cars are going. And then one pulls into Willow, and then one stops and goes across those hash marks, which is painted on there, which to me appears to be an illegal turn anyway you're going. I know it's setting up for a turn lane, but they're turning across those hash marks. And therefore, I'm stopping again because I don't have time to get out, go around them, and then get into that turn lane to get into Centennial. I'm just, in a perfect world, not picking on you. If Rod ever comes in, I'd take away his whole frontage on Crawford as well. That is a pain, to drive down Crawford and stop, and then go, and then stop, and then go. With all that traffic coming in off the interstate, you can't make a left-hand turn. And when they're making four or five of them, you might as well not even get in the left-hand lane, because you'd never know where people are going to turn. So if he can answer to that question, he's going to help me out. Other than coming in off the interstate, I don't really care to any information there. I agree 100% with you. It's the left-hand turn going west on Crawford.
The only question that I would actually bring back up, and then with regards to that, is with your example, you're still going to have that same issue, though, turning left, somebody's turning left on the Willow.
Yeah, but they can all go at one time. It's, when there's an opening, a couple of cars can go. It's, when I'm standing there, there's an opening, one goes in, and then by the time we get up to the next one, the traffic's coming again, and we've got to wait for all the traffic again. And then he goes. But typically, there's a break in traffic, especially with there being a stoplight at Centennial. There becomes a break in traffic. And so I get what you're saying, that you would have to stop there, but it's just, it's the continuous stops. And it's our own fault as a city government, allowing, I mean, Rod's got an 80-foot driveway across there. You can, you have no idea who's coming in and out of there and what direction they're going. It's crazy.
I'm Scott Canfield. I'm with PEC. I'm a licensed professional traffic engineer through the ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Basically, like I like to tell everybody, I didn't listen to my mom. I like to plan traffic. So with that, I would just like to, if at any point in time you have any questions, please feel free to just fire them off, because I don't really have a formal presentation here. I think one of the first things I'd like to talk about is there was a concern about accidents. And we looked at the accident data that the city had provided. As Todd had mentioned, there was really only one accident that could be directly attributed to the existing site. As he mentioned, it was a right turnout. Basically, according to the data, it looked like they thought they could take the inside lane. There was a vehicle in the left side lane, and they turned and turned into that vehicle. Based on the data that we were given, there were three left-turn accidents of folks coming northbound on Willow that were turning out and to proceed westbound on Crawford. There were an additional, three left-turn accidents of individuals on Crawford turning to go southbound down Willow, as well as a couple rear-end accidents that were kind of questionable on whether or not that individual was turning into, I believe you said it's Rod's, there to the east, or if it was the stacking because of, they were turning to go down Willow. There were a couple rear-end accidents. So in regards to the driveway, the accident data didn't really provide any significant information that said that it was any better or any worse than the other drives around there.
On the Willow accidents, and I don't know, when we collect data from accidents, do we collect where those people were going to or coming from, or just the place where the accident occurred?
It's where the accident occurred. They do provide a little bit of.
You know, I was just, I was just leaving Quick Shop.
Unfortunately, they don't say that.
No, I was just curious.
At Willow, I will say that two of the accidents that were northbound to go west, two of the three were, somebody was pulling out of the Brahms driveway at about the same time. And so they either met head-on, because they both were trying to turn left, and they occupied the same space. The other one was, somebody was pulling out of Brahms and got clipped by somebody turning left. So basically, it's kind of a, an interlocking of left turns that caused at least two of those accidents. And so with the current plan, that really wouldn't address, those accidents could still occur, unless you would go with some type of raised median that went down the middle of Crawford that prevented left turns from Willow or left turns from the Brahms facility. But other than that, there were accidents that occurred all along the corridor. They were all pretty much of the same type. They were left turners that were felt yield. Basically, they were trying to turn left in gaps that really weren't significant enough for them to complete their maneuver. Or they were waiting to turn left and got rear-ended from behind. And that was basically all of the accidents that occurred along that corridor were of those types of accidents. The only way to prevent the, or basically, the easiest way to prevent the left turn failure to yield is to prevent the left turns, be a median or something of that sort, which really kind of hurts development, because then the access is not available. Or basically, with a two-way left turn lane, you can get the left turners basically out of the through lane movement, and then you would hope that the rear-end accidents would then disappear, because then those folks that are slowing down to make their maneuvers are out of the through lane of traffic. The next item I would like to talk a little bit about is basically the traffic generated by the site and the facility here. There are existing, basically, the four fueling locations. And there is going to be an increase of up to, up to the 20 that are shown on the plan. In looking at some of the information that has been previously provided, I got to looking a little bit closer about the trip gen rates that the books, that the manuals provide. They provide trip generation rates based on a convenience mart with a gas station, based off of the number of fueling sites or positions that you can fuel from. And they also provide data that is based on the square footage of the building itself. In looking at the data from, that Quick Shop has provided, they have a facility similar size to this in Goddard, Kansas. It currently has 20 fueling stations. And so we kind of used that as a comparison, just in some quick numbers, and found that based on the square footage of that facility, the amount of traffic that is generated around that facility, that the numbers from the ITE matched closer to the numbers that were generated by the size of the building, rather than by the number of fueling stations. The data from the fueling stations, basically, there were so few studies done that the numbers were really not quite significant. So basically, by increasing the number of fueling stations from four to 20, we weren't going to see a, an increase of traffic by a factor of five. It was more along the lines of, just to give you a quick idea, the existing Quick Shop in the morning period is going to see about 120 trips. Okay, that's 60 cars entering and 60 cars leaving. With the increased size of the facility, what we were looking at was traffic would just about double. It would be a total of 240 cars, so it would be 120 in and 120 out. In the PM, we were also, the volumes look at doing about the same thing, but we are looking at a more significant number that the existing Quick Trip currently sees around 90 cars in and out. And the proposed facility would see about double that, so that there would be a total of 100, I'm sorry, 180 in and 180 out. So traffic volume-wise, looking at the facility more on the square footage of the building as opposed to the number of fueling stations seem to be a lot closer to what Quick Trip was finding at other facilities.
So it's sort of build it and they will come, huh?
Sort of, yes.
Do we know, does your data go deep enough to say how much of that's off the highway and how much is from the community?
I haven't got that far into it yet.
Okay, sorry.
This was just, just some quick preliminary to give us an idea of how many vehicles we were looking at adding by basically doubling the size of the site. So in the morning, basically, you're looking at adding one car into and out of the site. In the PM, you're looking at about an increase of roughly two cars per minute into and out of the site. And one of the things that, just to give you an idea as well, that we haven't really looked at much, I haven't looked at the signalization and that type of thing of Centennial. But one of the items that could come into play here is that as we begin to change patterns and that type of thing, we build a big, like you mentioned, build a bigger site, and they will come. One of the things we have to look at as well is, just because we build a bigger site, we're not going to be generating more traffic onto the site. In the book, we call it bypass trips. You might just be getting more people to stop at the store as opposed to adding additional traffic. So in other words, the site is bringing more traffic in and out, but it's not necessarily adding more traffic onto the existing streets. Those folks were already there. They were just finding this a more pleasant or more pleasing site to pull into and out of, and therefore, they're going to stop here. And we term those as bypass trips. So if you have any questions about what, some of the traffic information that we found so far?
Well, this can maybe be for you and Dean. What would a formal traffic study show us? I mean, people say traffic study. What would we know if we had a traffic study on this location that we don't know right now?
I'll let Dan take the first crack at that, and then I'll add in my experience. But he's probably reviewed more of those than I have.
Well, it's Scott Canfield. You've done quite a few of them, I'm sure, and it's, yeah, they're, basically, he's talked about quite a bit of what would be in one formally would be, what's the trip generation going to be? What's the existing? What's the proposed? What are the movements going to be, times of day? And then the impact on the street. And so, and it would show the bypass, like he's talking about, you know, the number of cars that drive by, that used to just pass by, now they're actually going to stop. So there would theoretically be more, more entering and exiting. So that's, it would just show formally what all those things are, show some maps, show some peak, possibly some peak counts on, you know, times of day and what, what cars come in and out. So I don't know if that hits the majority of it, or is there more to it than that?
That's pretty much it. We would go into an accident pattern. If we were seeing a significant accident pattern along the corridor, it would also be mentioned as well. We would go through and basically analyze the existing conditions today. And we use a term called level of service. We basically grade how well a facility is operating, just like you would get a grade in school, they're rated from A to F. We would show that the existing condition, that the intersection operated at a particular level of service. And then what we would do is then we would add in whatever the new development, the trips that the new development was bringing in. And then we would kind of distribute that traffic in and around the area. And then we would rerun the analysis based on that existing traffic volume with the proposed increase in traffic.
Using your A through F, I understand that a little bit. Let's say that this study came back looking at that area and gave it a C. Just, would a C trigger anything that the city would want to do or require somebody to do? I guess we get the study back, and it's what you guys both say it is. Is there a point where that, a mechanism where that triggers some activity then by the municipality or by the property owners? Or we just say, well, we've got it and? I'm sorry, I don't make this difficult, but if we're going to get a traffic study, I want to know what it's going to do for us.
One of the things that, as a traffic study, let's say we're looking. One of the things that, as a traffic study, let's say we're looking at the intersection there at Centennial and, and we find that, okay, based on the added volumes, that we need to extend left turn bays, or we need to add a right turn lane somewhere, or we would need to change the traffic signal phasing, how it operates. We would mention those items in the report and say, okay, if we add the traffic and you don't add these lanes, and we do see these lanes as being a failure based on the analysis. In our analysis, we look at not only particular intersections, but we can also look at particular movements. And, and they can also be graded. So if we add the traffic and we see all of a sudden, let's say that the left turn on Centennial goes from a C to an F, we would look at and make recommendations and say...
Okay, you'd recommend remedies for, that you think would work?
Correct. We would say, okay, we think you would need to make it dual left turn lanes or something to that nature.
Now, I beg your pardon in advance, when you say "we," are you talking as a traffic engineer or are you talking as an employee for a business?
I'm a traffic engineer. My job is to move traffic efficiently around.
Thank you, okay. I just wanted to be sure.
And that's what that report would, would state.
All right.
It would be things that I could justify with the city. And basically, the, I've given you some just real quick numbers in talking about the additional traffic and that type of thing. That's one of the things the traffic impact study would do is they would be able to actually see the calculations, how the numbers were generated. It would just be in a lot more detail in the, the study as opposed to me trying to convey it verbally today, so.
Thank you.
No, that's, that's perfectly fine.
And Scott, correct me if I'm wrong though, but really, as it pertains to our site, a traffic study though is not going to dictate one way or another whether or not the Crawford Street exit is going to be a hindrance or a help to either us or to the city, correct?
Correct. That driveway, we, we would look at it and say, as part of our study, I would sit down with the folks at the city and say, okay, one of the first things I need to do is get a good feeling, and we would come to an agreement on where we think the traffic is coming from. We would say, okay, out of these 180 cars that we've generated, are they coming westbound on Crawford, or are they coming eastbound on Crawford? How many are coming up Centennial? And we would acquire, come to an agreement on what percentages. It might be 50% from this way and 20 and 30. And so we would come up with that, and then basically we would apply those percentages to that 180. So if we agreed that, you know, 90% were coming off the highway, then I would try to get those 90 vehicles onto the site based off of coming from the west. And so, we would then look at the intersections and that type of thing to see if, how they would, how their level of service would operate then. As far as the driveways, the more driveways I have, the more I can break out the percentages. So, but as far as will one work better than the other, and as such, that would not really be part of the impact study. So to look at it and say, the full access is going to work better than a right turn, a right in, right out, probably wouldn't be part of the study. And that's more of an access management policy type issue.
Carl.
Yes?
I, a couple of things. First, a question possibly more for Dan or possibly for both of you, but I'm not clear, if we don't have a median, how would we control left-hand turns from the westbound lane of Crawford? I mean, we could say we could have double yellow lines, but I'm telling you, in this town, lines don't mean much. So that's, that's a question. And then second, so, so to control, make this only right-hand, you can't mark that left-hand lane saying right-hand only very easily. I don't know what that would mean way out there, one lane from you. I think you have to have a median. And then secondly, and that's the question, secondly, it's really hard for me to visualize all this. I'm a, I'm a single driver in a car, and we're talking about a lot of hypothetical situations with traffic going here and there and, and all these lanes that are so close. I do think a traffic study could help, and I would be particularly interested in a recommendation from the engineers. We have two of them here from the city, deal with traffic. I, I think they've had lots of experience with this, and I think we need their recommendation on how this might look before we make a decision on, on this entrance, be my opinion.
Maybe we should ask the question, how do you feel about a continuance with the traffic study?
But I'm not sure how a traffic study is going to help determine, I mean, right now they're either going to go in through the front that's there, or they're going to go in through Willow. I'm not quite sure how a traffic study is going to help figure out how many is going to go off of Centennial and how many is going to pull in Centennial. I mean, there's only one way that they're really going in right now, and that's right through the gut of what's there. I don't see very many people pulling down Willow going in to your station. I see them exiting out through there, but they're, I mean, the traffic study is going to say, people are coming in off the highway and they're turning right into your facility. Yeah, that's the only option they got right now. They're not going to go down to Willow and turn right in. I mean, I, I just, I'm not big on studies, I'm, that's not, I mean, it's like hiring a consultant to do something. It's just stand out there and look at it.
Can I go back to your first, your first question?
Controlling left-hand turn.
Controlling left-hand turn.
From westbound traffic.
To give you the honest answer, the only way, work in Wichita, spent 12 years in Kansas City area, the only way you're going to stop left turns is to put a raised median in the middle of the roadway.
Correct.
If you put the pork chop shaped, triangular shaped island out of the driveway, you're going to find that a majority of the folks are going to obey it and go right in or right out. But there is going to be an occasion where somebody is in a hurry, thinks it's going to be faster for them to kind of make a little bit of a right turn and then go ahead and finish it off with a left turn.
And, and a good example of that would be 61st Street and 135 north of Wichita, going into that Quick Shop across from the restaurant there.
Correct.
And it's a raised median, it has a right entrance and exit off of 61st, but if you want to make a left, you have to go to the light and turn down whatever that street is.
That is correct.
And it, it flows fairly nicely, and that's a busy Quick Shop.
Correct. And, and that's part of, that, that project is actually part of KDOT against Department of Transportation. They do have a very strict access management policy, and that was part of that corridor is that basically from that first intersection to the terminus of the ramps, there will be right in, right out driveways only.
And that's where I think we are, because then we would be committing, if we're committing to a right in, right out only, we're committing tax dollars to changing Crawford Street and putting in a median, and that won't necessarily be extremely cheap.
Correct.
Well, I'm not in favor of the traffic.
I may add a few things from, I guess, just listening to information Scott presented about the traffic analysis. We, you know, I think we've got a pretty good idea of the trip generations into the facility based on the existing stores they've looked at at other locations. So I think that gives us a pretty good idea. You know, we have somewhat of, of an idea of the existing facility, so, you know, we've got kind of the, and then we've looked at accident patterns based on the information provided. I think we've looked, you know, we've kind of did the Cliff Notes version of a traffic analysis, but not the full version with all the, you know, graphics and everything. But I think we've got somewhat of a handle on, on, on how this intersection and this area is functioning and, and, and everything's working there. But the one thing I, I guess I look at also is there, there is the light at Centennial that is somewhat of a protection for traffic because that gives you a break in traffic so you don't have just a free rein of traffic going there. You have, you know, your eastbound traffic stopped at that light. And then also, I think that the, based on our site plan, it is, you know, it's logical to say, as Todd said, that you would, coming off of the interstate, you're going to come in that entrance off of Crawford. If it's, if it's there, you're going to use it. When you're going back out, I'm going to use the light over at Centennial. I think if we do a traffic analysis, I'm not sure, and Scott may be able to answer this, how you distribute where people are coming in and out in this situation, but I think, you know, common sense of drivers is they're probably going to go the path of least resistance. And so if there's a lot of cars coming on Centennial and it's backed up, they're probably going to, or, I'm sorry, Crawford, you know, people are probably going to, they want to go back on the interstate, they're probably going to go where it's easiest.
So why do you want it then? If that's the common sense, and that's what you do, and that's what I would do, and that's what the common sense tells you, why do you want, why do you want your client to pull out into the left and not go over, and not be forced to do the smart thing, which is go to Willow or go to the light? Why, why do you want, why are you fighting coming in off the interstate, taking a right in, and then using the common sense approach that you just said, to go out onto Willow and/or to go out on Centennial? Or to be able to exit and continue, pull in for gas, and then they gas up and then they pull out on a right-hand turn, continue down east on Crawford to get a hotel or stay in, to stay in town? What I'm trying to prevent is a guy who comes in, pulls in the right, fills up, and then goes back out to the front trying to get back out onto the interstate while a guy is coming down Crawford and thinks he can just whip in to that free open 36-foot driveway, and he's kind of coming in this way, and this guy's going out this way, and we have two other common sense approaches that make sense. And yet we're still fighting to try and get to stop this from happening, and you guys are like saying, well, they won't do that. And, and so if they don't, then let us put a V thing in there that is a right turn in and a right turn out, and we won't have that problem with the left coming left out or turning left out of your deal. They're going to do what you just said, which is, common sense says go to the light. So why are we fighting trying to get left back on the interstate when common sense says go to the light?
Come to the show.
My name is Tim Rowark. I'm the Vice President of Petroleum and Construction for Quick Shop. And I'll tell you, I've been here over 15 years, and I used to shop at that store before I worked at Quick Shop, because it was just convenient between Tulsa and Denver. And I want to tell you, when I first got here, I said, we got to rebuild that store, you know, make a bigger store. And I'll tell you, it's taken us 15 years before I could get this thing up here to where we were actually able to do it. We tried many times over the years, both internally and externally, on buying land and trying to do this, because we felt it would be so much better than this store that we've got there right now. So we finally got this thing moved up to the front, and I got to tell you how Quick Shop looks at these things at Kroger, is I have to fight for capital to get these stores rebuilt and new stores put in or remodeled or the raisin rebuilt. I have to prove that not only to Quick Shop, you know, with the capital that we have, but to Kroger that we can make this store work. So when we looked at this door and I finally got this thing up to the top, we had, I had to make several assumptions about it, had to make a lot of assumptions. We studied this thing and we decided, how can we make this work? Because it's competing with stores in Iowa and Kansas and Colorado and everything else to be done. And one of the assumptions that we made, you know, when we were coming in here and looking at this to even prove internally that we thought it could work, is that we would have an entrance off of Crawford. And we really didn't concern ourselves a whole lot with that at the time because we already had an existing entrance at that point. And wherever we've been doing this, we have had existing entrances and we've been able to keep those existing entrances. We recognize the concern on traffic, and they know more about that than I do, but I'm just saying, that's some of the thinking that we've had. And we've built over 1,800 stores, you know, convenience stores throughout the Kroger chain, and we have a lot of experience with that. And we're the ones that are trying to decide where these stores go. To get those 1,800 in, we probably looked at 7,500 locations. And we reject a lot of those locations primarily because of access. You know, because we've got to make those work. And have we made some mistakes before? We've made some mistakes that hurt us. You know, I don't think we, we ever go in trying to make it a safety issue or anything. It's never, we don't ever try to abandon our thinking on that, you know, but there's certain, I heard that Schilling location brought up, would we build one with access like that again? You know, I don't know, you know, really. You know, I mean, that's not what's, I mean, I have trouble getting in and out of there too. So we go by a lot of those and we look at those, the most important thing we look at is location, as you all know it, and access into it. Now, I can tell you, you know, that one of the things we do think is important is that access into the front. Because, you know, we all have theories that, well, is it easier to go in on the sides or wherever, and people that are coming off the interstate really don't know that, you know, and we think that they pass unbiased. And does it make more sense, is it logical for them to go out the others? Absolutely. You know, and I think a lot of people that'll actually come in will go back out and take a light to get back out. You know, we could even put up signs or something.
Especially if it's the only way to get out. They'll find the interstate if it's the only way to get out. If they can come in through there, but they've got to get back out through Willow or Centennial, they're going to find it.
Right. Yeah, they'll find it. And, you know, it might even help if we put signs up there at the dispensary saying, please exit on, you know, this or that. But I'm telling you, if we went into this thing knowing that we would not be able to get, you know, I even heard that, you know, I think, Ken, you'd said something about you weren't even in favor of the right in, right out. You know, if we were looking at that and it began along the line thinking, we can't even do a right in or right out there, you know, I don't know. You know, but, but anyway, we really want to build this store. And we, the traffic study, I've talked with these gentlemen about it, and I don't really know that it's going to shed a lot of light on anything else here, you know. We certainly are not going to have five times the traffic in this store, you know, on this. But one other thing that we're very concerned about that's concerning me as being in charge of this whole thing is the time. You know, this, we had this project planned to go in a whole lot earlier, you know, and we had a lot of delays from a lot of things, not, not here, but just internally with some other things, you know, with the involvement of other groups and all. And the traffic study puts us even further on down the line, you know, on this here. And, I mean, I think what I'm saying is, it is, somebody asked earlier, is it crucial to us? Well, it really is, you know, to us to be able to make the hurdle rates and things that we talk about and we think, you know, that will be necessary to make this store work out. Anybody have any questions for me? Because I can answer kind of along the line of what Quick Shop's thinking on this, and I'll just talk about traffic.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
To be respectful to everybody, you're going to lose your quorum here in about 12 minutes. I have an engagement that, so we need to kind of, if we have new information to look at, we need to look at new information.
Gentlemen, have you completed your presentation? I mean, I think I've heard everything that is useful to me, and all your comments are well-received.
Yeah, I think...
We need to open this up to the public forum and then after your presentation is done, and then we've, we've got a short time here to make a decision. And you're the ones more interested in fast-tracking here.
Well, we do thank you for your time for especially as well.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman...
If that concludes, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would appreciate at least a couple of those minutes in executive session with you.
Yes, I was going to recommend that we do that, but let's just open it up to the public here if there's anybody in the room that wants to address the issue. Gentleman in the blue shirt is the only person I don't recognize.
That's...
Oh, okay. Well, there being, being none, then we'll bring it back to the commission. I'm going to move that the commission go into a private or closed session with Mr. Binkston, and we'll discuss.
Carl, before I can support that, I really, the, the part I'm missing that I'm really struggling, I'm not, I'm not convinced that a formal traffic study is critically important, but I really would like to have the recommendation from the city engineers. That's important to me. I rely, they've done a lot of this, and I don't think we've heard from Dan or Kent yet in regard to what their thoughts are on left and right entrance.
Well, I disagree somewhat with that, and that I just think we're going to get a letter grade and back A to A to F and we're going to... The traffic study?
I'm not, I said, I'm, I'm not asking specifically about traffic, but we haven't heard their recommendations yet, and can they make a recommendation without a traffic study?
I think that's what they want to talk about in general session, because they can't make a recommendation without a traffic study possibly, so.
I mean, city engineers cannot make a recommendation. They can issue their, we make, we issue our opinions all the time here, we, but I, I don't know enough about traffic to know. Okay, Mr. Stack, how do you feel about the Crawford?
Do you want us to talk about it here, Greg, or in there?
Well, I'd like to take it into the exact-
Yeah, I would appreciate a-
Yeah, I'd like that.
-couple of minutes before anybody says anything further.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion to go into the private?
Do we need to put a timeframe on that?
We do. And you might be best to do that.
Make it 10 minutes?
I move we go into executive session for the purpose of discussions, and reconvene at-
If I may, Mr. Box, I, we can do it in five minutes.
That's what I was going to say. I was going to say at 5:55.
I second. Call in favor, say aye. Opposed? We go into- We'll call the meeting back to order. After due deliberation, we think we have the solution that will work best for this commission. Is there a motion on the side?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this item until the completion of a current traffic study for that, those intersections involved.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Ken. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes that matter. Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I might ask the, I do think it would be helpful for the record if those present could elaborate to a certain extent on the circumstances that prompted the thought as to the benefit and utility of the traffic study.
Well, and from my perspective, there are several members of the commission that are missing this meeting, and those that were present at the last meeting were not in favor of the Crawford curb cut. I think they, there was generally positive reception to the right-right thing, but more of that conversation was about exiting. So, it'd be fair to bring them back into the conversation with the traffic study. I think it would help them to see that as well.
And if it's relevant, I personally wish for the city engineers to be involved in making some recommendation to this commission. I rely on their recommendations. I respect their recommendations, and I think they need time and a study to make a legitimate recommendation to us.
I agree. I'm not a traffic engineer. I do want to see not just a sketch of a traffic study, but a complete traffic study, and then have city staff have an opportunity to digest that, and help me understand exactly what it says.
Mr. Andrews, we have one more item on the agenda, but we're going to lose our quorum. How will we handle that? Would you just move to continue that to the next?
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Andrews just pointed out, if I may, back to the prior item, this was a noticed public hearing, and I think the question is, and I gathered, that you might very well wish to continue the public hearing, anticipating the involvement of other members of the planning commission, and the potential that others might, there might be for public input. Is it fair to say that that continuation wouldn't, could be to a specific date?
I was going to suggest your regular June 18th meeting, that we would want to hear quickly from representatives of Quick Shop whether they thought that the June 18th meeting date would work for them in terms of having a traffic study and bringing that back for your review. But my suggestion would be to continue this over to your June 18th meeting.
If the traffic study can be completed.
If the traffic study would be completed.
No, it's not going to happen. I'm out of time. Traffic studies are only going to take us about a month to sit down and analyze, because you basically need a couple of weeks worth of data alone, just for counters, to go out there on the site, to get a good representation of exactly what's out there. And then, plus, another two weeks or so to formalize the report, address the, anything on the analysis. So, no, the June 18th study is just, or the next meeting would not work, nor would get the traffic study, to present it to you guys in a fair manner.
So, to be fair to Quick Trip, then we leave it open, because they're going to have to decide how quickly, or if you choose to do a traffic study, and then you could work with city staff. Would that work for you, Dean?
Well, for the benefit of those in the noticed area for the public hearing, we will have to have some mechanism to inform them as to when this is coming back. So, the next regularly scheduled meetings are June 18th, July 2nd, and July 16th.
I'm sorry, say that again. What was that date?
June 18th, July 2nd, and July 16th.
Scott? July 16th.
16th would work, as far as you know at this point.
Yes, as far as we know at this point.
So do we need a subsequent motion, then, to set the next date hearing, this application to July 16th?
It would just be the, essentially, the same motion, but to continue the public hearing over to the July 16th meeting.
Are you good, or you need a vote on that?
I would, yes. It'd be a motion and vote.
Just continuing item 2B and 2A, I guess.
Yes, items 2A and 2B would be continued over to the July 16th meeting.
Is there a motion to continue the two items?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those items will be continued. Other matters?
Can we ask just one follow-up question with regards to the traffic study? And we're just trying to gain a better understanding as to exactly what the intent of it is going to be, other than just to say, we've got to spend money to do a traffic study, so to speak, for this. So, we're trying to gain an understanding-
We're just about to be adjourned, because the quorum is expiring. You can discuss that with Mr. Andrews, I think. Thank you. Anything else you want to get in here that's important, Dean?
This doesn't require any minimum vote or quorum. We still have a majority of a quorum for voting purposes, but Mr. Roger Simpson, you have a letter at your place there. He had a conditional use permit approved December of 2012. He's trying to move up in terms of his contractor licensing, and he will not have that process completed by six months from the date of approval. And he's requesting that you give him an extension of the time period to obtain a building permit for his conditional use permit application, which is there at K Wood and Schilling. So, just appreciate a motion and a second. If you're in favor of granting him that extension, then I can report that back to him.
Yep. Do we have, can we do that with three of us?
Yes, you have a majority of a quorum there, and Mr. Story can vote.
I'd make a motion to grant and extend Roger Simpson.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or maybe we should have raised the hand, so you're going to have to walk back up here. Any opposed? We'll pass that motion.
Your, this is a substitute for your regular June 4th meeting, so there will not be a meeting next Tuesday, and there will be a meeting on the 18th.
And before, or you're getting ready to adjourn, Mr. Binkston, is it fair, so that we can expedite their question that they're wanting to answer? Is there anything inside the meeting that we had that they shouldn't know about, that is maybe in our decision, that we could talk to them later about, that would help them do that? Or, I mean, it seems like we're giving them this traffic study to go out and do that. Is that the conversation you had with us, is that not beneficial to them, or do you want to hold that within city council and in between us? Does that make sense, or am I-
Oh, it does.
I'm trying to give them some sort of direction. If I see these guys back here again, with traffic studies that make absolutely no difference to the outcome of this whole thing, we're wasting, I mean, we, I'm a little perturbed that I came here on a special meeting over Crawford exit, that I thought they clearly understood the position of the commission before. I didn't feel like I was given any information, and so for the, to see them come back again, asking for that with traffic study is not in my best interest or theirs, I believe. But I'm not taking that right away from them. I'm just saying, is there any clarification we can give them outside of this meeting night, that would give them some way of helping to move this forward?
Well, certainly, discussions with staff would be along that line, and hopefully helpful.
Okay.
I think, if I may, suggest that you rely on staff to fulfill that role, and that we're still in that process where we need to discourage any direct communication between the applicant and members of the planning commission. In fact, I would strongly encourage, particularly in the midst of this analysis of the matter, but we'll certainly, I think, I'm sure staff and I will do our best to be as helpful as we can as the matter progresses.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. During, we're here.
Thank you all for your time.